This conference will now be recorded.
To the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is consideration of approving our consent agenda items. We have four items on tonight's agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, approval of minutes of the special council meeting on August twenty-four, approved a special informant out of the budget for the past month for the K five K run law to take place as part of the equitable audit test twenty twenty-four, and statement of those paid in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-two.
There I have a question, please. Madison Powell, that's our communications specialist, he's our contract person.
Yeah, sure.
I can motion to accept consent agenda item one A for D. Second, with the motion from Congressman Schreiber, second, Congressman Adcox, fourth, please follow.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Item number two on the agenda this evening is request for comments from the public. I was giving a little bit of actual information tonight because in addition to request for comments from the public via the public hearing, and so if you'll see on the agenda, look at item number three, will be the public hearing regarding revenue neutral rate, and then, um, are you going to do the only one?
One.
Number five, a public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So there will be a couple of opportunities for public comment, whenever we have public come up, if you would start by stating your name and address, that would be wonderful. Will give you three minutes. When you get close to the end of your time, I'll give you a little signal to know to start wrapping it up, and we'll just open our time for the regular public comments. If anyone wants to share.
Additional public comments.
Yes, to the public hearing for our, and then if you're thinking about it.
Jordy Morgan, three zero three South Eighth Street. Last time I was here, I spoke about legally trying to keep my ticket. This time, if I brought state vote ordinances on tickets from Bonner Springs, the local parks, Stacy Pet, Johnny, Stacy Life Review.
Should you want to talk about that? There being none, we'll move on to item number three, which is a public hearing. Come back to the public hearing, you consider it stating where we will release the policy of the market for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, the whole budget. If anyone wants to make a motion to open the public hearing. The motion from Congressman Adcox, and the second from Congressman Schreiber, will please follow.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
If anyone, um, in, in, um, that would like to, um, rather than be called a raise, um, even though we're trying to, we don't. There being none, um, under the notion of both the public hearing, either through the, the, uh, motion from Congressman Schreiber, a second from Congressman Adcox, fourth, please follow.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Item number four, Consider Resolution Twenty Twenty Four dash eleven, a resolution stating government body intends to levy appropriate tax rate exceeding revenue.
What's your reading background?
Certainly, thank you, Governor, Mr. Assistant Senator. What you have before you is a resolution which you will authorize the city to adopt to exceed the revenue neutral rate, as we talked about since about May, we run the revenue neutral rate to you, but after we pop it up, that's a budget process. Revenue neutral rate this year for the city that we feel is three six point nine six mils, the current mill rate for the city is, um, four zero, four zero point nine four oh, so the difference between those two is four point seven five four, so if we adopt the revenue rate, if you're optioning the mill with four point seven five four, as we talked about throughout this process, everybody's intention, and the government, uh, it's budget that we presented to you, you could say one mill per piece, so you exceed the revenue neutral rate, therefore, this, this, this resolution required to get adopted. I answer the question.
All right, fine. On the meeting that we had previously, uh, for July seventeen, to indicate to the government, state that we were planning to exceed revenue neutral rate, this is the motion that was made. The Council of Adcox made the motion to approve the new million levy at three point nine point nine four mils, no mention of exceeding revenue neutral. The state, they believe, both saying we're revenue neutral, because it's not ever been the record property. I don't want to be revenue neutral, it's just that, I think we should follow the law.
So, how, who is the state?
Mr. Goodie.
The, yeah, the lead, yeah, he was the same, he said, he thinks the state would think that you are revenue neutral. Well, I'm happy to give my analysis again, as I first did once, but.
That's a good question, I'm just curious, but what was the mill, what was the mill levy, if you were to keep a level, what was the mill levy from last year?
It was point nine four zero.
Four, the point nine four zero.
Yes.
And then, the, um, motion was to not exceed thirty-nine point nine four zero, is that correct?
Yes.
So, in the motion itself, it's an exceeding revenue neutral by not lowering it to, probably I don't want to do this now, but four point seven five four mils lower, so, so I just, by just saying the number, am I understanding correctly, that since the number was stated at thirty-nine point nine four zero, that was even more specific than it needed to be by state criteria, but it obviously would be exceeding revenue rate in over three mils higher than the, than the, um, revenue rate.
Um, maybe just a second. So, K S A seventy-nine dash two-nine eight eight is the revenue neutral statute, is passed to the law twenty twenty-one, and, um, in last, uh, fact, last, twenty twenty-four. Um, the process involves giving notice to the county court. I was proposed to pretend to exceed revenue neutral rate and provide the date, time, and location of the public hearing, and it was passed, right? But to answer your question, there, a rate has to be proposed, because on our work with notices, they calculate how much each local taxing, um, district, based on the proposed maximum rate fee, um, how much tax there, taxes people lost on each local, without discovering the problem. Zero, um, so, library, county, unified government, city, all of that, um, those different taxing districts will have their own hearing, and they're on, saying, you know, the notice. This is what proposals do, if you want to come, provide public comment, with the date, time, you do that. If you have a case law, based on ODA, or tax deals, um, decisions, they have said that if you mess up the actual hearing, like, specifically, if I, um, uh, not hold into hearing that day, if somebody else across the state posted it, and now the notices, and then they didn't inform, so they decided to move to a different bay, and they just put, put the nervous app on the, on the, on the door, so they didn't actually move, or come, come in, open hearing, and then, continue. That, even though they adopted that, a rate in excess of revenue neutral, was later determined by ODA, that they had to go down revenue neutral. Um, there's also been case law regarding the specific wording of the, um, motion at the hearing, not at the notice stage, or, like, when you're, but, where the actual wording of the motion was to adopt the revenue neutral rate, but it was clear from, from all that were there, that the whole public in the public hearing, that the consensus of the board was opposite, they just haven't voted, so they haven't had that. There is no precedent on this part, they can't, you know, write a notice. The things that I will point out regarding the notice statute, however, is that notice has to be given to the county court, and, um, by the government, and the tax rate makes the, uh, the tax rate, provided along with the date, time, and location of the hearing. So that all occurred here. I think the, the issue that, or protestant, had voted after this, that the question, whether the agent, in this case, the city manager, or whatever staff was involved in that, provided the, uh, notice to the county clerk, had agency or authorization from the government body to provide that notice. That said, it's purely a procedural transparency mechanism in the statute. The whole purpose of providing the notice is to give plenty of time, and a specific hearing date, and transparency regarding the maximum rate to the public, so that at the hearing, you all couldn't determine what to do. Um, and that could be to adopt a budget that is at the revenue neutral rate today. The notice statute is merely procedural mechanism to make sure the notices can set out, and none of those steps were missed. This, this is a legal hearing today, it's aligned with the statute, and ultimately, um, I don't think the explicit intent of the statute would be circumvented, because you have the ability to ratify that decision, um, or vote, uh, to adopt revenue neutral rate, uh, or lower, uh, today. So, this is the most important period and moment in revenue neutral statute, nothing was missing up to that. I guess, final comment is that, in the wording of the actual motion, I think from the context of the, of the discussion, it was clear that there was at least consensus in voting on the motion after that, Bishop, um, that you were talking about, a difference between a max rate of forty, something, and thirty-nine point seven five, and that the ultimate motion prevailed, we know, we know that. The specific wording of the motion did not have that entire discussion in it, but it's clear from the context and from the resolution being considered. Finally, the notice, um, provision, it's hard to provide a notice to county clerk before July twentieth, does not require a resolution, it requires, um, notice to give, and it's not clear from there that, that the government body, or its agents, couldn't do that same thing, it's really, it's deserving your ability to make a decision on any, at a later date. And I think that's been observed, and that, that there's compliance, which is a compliance with this, um, provision, that most likely would stand up, but there is no precedent on this, and, I'm still doing my best with reading actual pass for language, determining what the extent of compliance would be. I think the court, um, very clearly determined that there was substantial, and that the government itself ratified that on the key, on the date, and the location, and the setting, and the, or, July twenty, so, intent of the audit is still clear, even if that's a split chapter.
So, when that, when that was, um, you said that there wasn't a resolution necessary?
No, the court resolution doesn't, um, exist in that, um, it's seventy-nine dash two-nine eight eight, two, and, the resolution that's required is that you have to adopt a resolution at the revenue neutral hearing.
So, the resolution wasn't even necessary for, that was, it was, the motion was not made to pass the resolution.
A resolution was not necessary. Question is whether the vote actually, um, gave agency to your staff to, to go forward to giving specific notice.
You cleared that up pretty well, but that was certainly not clear from that resolution that's presented in the motion, did not reflect the resolution, it reflected what, the resolution number was never even mentioned in the motion. And that's, that's what I thought about, why was that resolution presented to us?
Right, and I, frankly, I think the resolution is just, this is a very strict process, and other local boards have, I've been in trouble, and they didn't have a very specific script, I've had a couple other revenue neutral hearings, um, and other governing boards, and before they take them vote, I say, hold on, go up, review the resolution, make sure it has everything, because you don't get a deal.
But we didn't have that here.
Well, if you have the resolution.
We didn't have that here.
Right.
You were good at that.
That's correct, so, the wording of the motion only requires the notice.
I understand that, I understand that.
And so.
It's just the process that we went through was confusing, and now it's being answered to not, we've asked for that answer, remaining, you know, the last, we're trying to get that answer, that's where my.
Well, I mean, I, I read the minutes from the meeting, um, the language of motion reading, I was familiar with that, um, and I think I provided at least this, an initial analysis, when the leadership asked for the meeting minutes, and provided to him, um, but I'm not saying it's not possible, that the border taxes deals could not, as an example, but if the policy choice of the body of this authority is to exceed revenue neutral, then as the resolution, ordinance is passed tonight, front of the, um, that's where the staff would be, and it was just, you know, additional clarity for me to consider an act of opportunity. Which is our standard practice, every year, we know of the resolution. Resolution is just not as permanent, or as kind of absolutely formal as an ordinance. You'll see in tonight's meeting, you can do it by ordinance or with a resolution, because the statute order requires you to do it that way. We do a number of resolutions, in fact, this is number eleven we're entertaining now, right, that are not statute order required, but they're somewhat policy built, right, they establish a policy, they give you a guidance, that's why we have done it that way, we could be, even this year, to do it that way, but it's not required, and, and, I think, the council put it right, you know, we, what we're trying to do is preserve our, our intent to exceed the revenue neutral, but it doesn't say that we're going to absolutely do that, it just says, if we intend to do these things, we'll let you know that, and you can do it with statute order time, right, and now is the time to decide whether the resolution you're going to adopt, you will adopt it as it is, or you'll make the modification that you would like to do, this is the time. We're here, and, and I think, Mr. Non, your opinion legally is that we were compliant with the rules and regulations governing our intent to exceed the revenue neutral? Or have been to said resolution or ordinance. I think that what we did on the, on July, July eighth, July ninth, that, or, after this, ultimately, um, administrative action, we reached consensus on that, the direct staff to do something, to select the direct staff, to sign contract, to protect the agency, um, whatever, something like that, so that was directly, and to do so, we did it, and now, as a policy matter, any council person believes that the law hasn't been following, that that can be a basis for a note of anything in excess of revenue neutral, um, you don't have to, you can vote to vote the best degree you want, um, but I think that, yes, and I did it, um, based on what we, what we, what we.
So to just put a button on it, Phil, a lot of people here this evening that were not giving the last few, um, from what it sounds like, made a motion, had a reservation that we could have used, should we wanted to, didn't end up using it, but made a motion that made it obvious that the intent was to give us the ability to exceed revenue neutral by being very specific in, in naming that mill at maximum three, thirty-nine point nine four zero. So, because we did that, our, um, city manager made the proper notification to the county saying, yes, there's intent to exceed revenue neutral, and posted the dates for the public hearing, which is why we're all here tonight, and the resolution, um, spoken in the, in the state statute is what we're looking at, so we're good to go.
There you go, yeah.
Very good, um, so, if you can bring in now the other council comments or questions about the revenue neutral, um, or exceeding revenue neutral, if not, um, always for mention.
Okay, I'll make a motion on the neutral rate, either. Consider Resolution Twenty Four eleven, resolution stating that government body intends to levy appropriate tax rate exceeding revenue neutral rate. Steed the revenue.
We can go to Congressman Schreiber, second, who wants to go out, or the third, please follow.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Moving on to item number five, we got the public hearing regarding fiscal year twenty twenty-five annual budget. Um, so, is there a motion to open this, that's the kind of, uh, public hearing, if you know who that is, in the public hearing, second, with the motion from Congressman Schreiber, second, from Congressman Adcox, fourth, please follow.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
And once again, to be remembered, if anyone wants to show the, the name during this public hearing, by, on your approach, and start, address, you'll have three minutes, on your, 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 your,
Yes, this goes back to twenty fifteen, I'm sorry, November fifteen, twenty twenty-one, it's sensitive what they were required to do. It's quite a bit of correspondence. I would, uh, I think I'll have Mr. Gerber revisit the certificate that you're looking at first, and then certainly legal counsels should probably weigh in as to what action we want to cease and desist. Uh, but I don't recall any of this in planning and zoning, that sort of thing. So therefore, we would, we would want to make sure that any impact to our city is certainly considered, and so.
Well, we'll finish up the project, so we're not, um, tangling too much up, but then we'll have a discussion after that if we need to. Um, can you walk us through?
Absolutely, the certificates you have in front of you, which we're asking you to sign. Spells out the maximum authority for the budget, for the funds that are required legally to be budgeted. So you have the general fund, you got the special fund, you got us, for like profit passes, so we're allowed to associate with those funds. See that, uh, the amount of tax that you will be adopted will be a general fund and that's a respond amounts to four point five million dollars. And that amount is up now on the owners, and we will establish the amount. But again, it will be approximately. And then you have, uh, seven other funds that are required to be budgeted, uh, special highways, special events, solid ways, economic development, technology, government, special sets. So you can see that overall expenditures, a maximum expenditures for the city area until the twenty twenty-five, this three year, are about fourteen million dollars.
And that fortunately not, that would include all sorts of revenue, not the F P, F P, sales tax, and freight rates, which is a big part of it.
Yes.
Certificate sheet does not reflect the revenue, it only reflects expenditures, but the budget obviously includes all forms of revenue. If this reflects, we got to reflect the, you know, when we're going to discuss.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
No.
Mayor. Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Housekeeping, do not leave without signing it, please. Thank you.
So, back to our neighbors.
Yes.
Um, I realize there may be an email chain. I, I don't, um, believe we, the previous administrator authorization to, uh, streets, or would we have seen have the authorization to make a decision on, on those towns? Um, if, if it would help, because they're not going to have another meeting for two weeks. And this would be a question, I suppose, for not, should we add potentially an item to the agenda for a council action? And saying you may not, like, as cease and desist to tell, um, maybe, for their information. So they don't throw the story of our.
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
Is there any of that case of, uh, four, like four person road?
Um, I don't, I don't.
I think it's four in general.
It didn't be a challenge.
Then normally, I'm not, we're meeting in a agenda, but this is something we found out, not literally on the road between meetings here. Uh, I'm going to tell you, um, our residents in Edwardsville, uh, by far are not fans of this project. They're not giving any looks to us, and, um, we don't want our every day traffic on the streets and into traffic impacted for, um, one day on, by traffic that's not in street density. And so we possibly would consider, if we're kind of, we'd consider adding items to the agenda as, if that's the case. Um, and just taking a formal action and asking our city manager to issue a cease and desist letter for development that would affect our infrastructure on hundred and tenth street or speaker road or in Edwardsville streets, uh, adjacent to the property.
And that was on the, there was a plan going forward down here. That street was agreed upon to come off one hundred and ten, down here, and right where the opening is to go into where the hard rock is going to be, that street was supposed to go like this and turn and come back in to remember me, not hundred and ten street. You're not going to get a sim fifty-three foot trailer to run that run around anywhere, you know? And what, would they want to carry it out? I don't understand. But that was agreed upon, I remember that, that that was going to be the entrance to the, to the, so, nope. Nope, I don't remember, I never heard, I don't know.
The question for Mr. Malat, a second, Congressman Schreiber, would the first please follow?
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Um, I suppose this could be a formal motion just to relay to our neighbors, um, that and when you guys discuss or, or comment on this, on this, on the, you'd like to contribute. Um, but where I would watch you here is a motion that issues a cease and desist letter from the city of Edwardsville to the city of Warner and the developers of that property, that they would not, in search of on touch, remove any part of our infrastructure, including our first major, like the sidewalk, and they're not to cross through breakthroughs on hundred and tenth street or speaker, bringing areas of streets better or bad.
Mayor, I apologize for not being more up to date on this, it's pretty extensive. Uh, this started in November of twenty-one. This looks like a driveway permit. Uh, certainly, yeah, authority to withdraw permits, but it's been, that, as, I can go through all of this, but I can get you caught up to June fifth of twenty twenty-three, where the previous administration talked with the main, uh, property manager, and it essentially is that they're confirming that that permit is approved, and still approved. It was approved in that twenty-one and twenty-two timeline here. So that's, it's been pending for quite a long time, it looks like, and, uh, that, that would have been a driveway permit, it's just commonly done at the city level, so.
So not elected?
No, that wouldn't be, you would think in some planning commission form, there would be some of that, but it's not our planning commission, right, in the sense of how they do it on the property. What they need from us is a driveway permit. And so that's, even though it seems a pretty big driveway, but it looks like as, I do have a link here to the hundred and tenth drive entrance, I finally found it, and that was forwarded on June fifth of twenty twenty-three to, uh, so it's been pending for quite a long time, and that's essentially what they're going off of, is that they intend to do forward with that permit. So I, first of all, we need to, we need to go and research ordinance wise, how long a permit is valid for, and if they, if they did all of those things, such as pay and have the bonds, just the curb cut, cut into our road as we wanted. There's a number of things that we just need to clarify administratively, it sounds like to me. So I think under those circumstances, we have the authority just to say, uh, please stop until we clarify all of this.
Permits do not run for perpetuity, I know that. Most cities, uh, your permit only lives for six months.
Yes.
And unless you go out and do something like the, the day before, the sixth month you work on it, then you, there's another six months, but they have to change. So the permit should be enough.
Yes, and that's kind of what we need to research, is exactly if, if a verbal exchange or this written exchange email wise kind of resurrects that in some way, uh, so we just need to do the research and that sort of thing. So given that there's a lot of questions, and maybe that permit is not valid, we should just tell them, hey, cease and desist until we give them out a permit. So that's the next piece of my.
Is there anything we need to make on the emails?
I would consideration, I would want to research, uh, the driveway permit, or, it's fifteen five, one twenty-three, it doesn't come out. So anyway, I'm looking at, I'd rather research an expiration issue first. And then the verification of a permit. It's not going to give, right, that it's valid, to do certain things, it's the law. It's a good process for both. In some cases.
And this could be an over twenty thousand dollar decision.
As, as we discussed, it is. Well, I think the direction of the staff is to find out what our legal standing is, and I don't know if we can resolve that by, I think that we understand what we need to do is somehow cease and desist, if it's legal, that we can do that. You check the expiration, whether or not all of the monies and bond was paid and that sort of thing. Our city clerk is here, who's also our permitting clerk, and I don't know if she has any input on the spinel property, uh, if that's been something recent, because it has to be this summer, that's somewhat recent, is there anything that you?
I have no, I, do you know the address, Mark?
Autumn property.
Whatever Vicki's address is.
You're right across the street, yeah. I, we can research, yeah, I, I don't think this is the time.
I should, right?
Uh, there's various, the schedule that corresponds, there's a link to the, to the actual project, and the curb cuts, if you will, to the driveway. Uh, unless Mr. Nye has some other suggestion, I think we just say, first thing tomorrow, stop cease and desist until we can regroup, ensure that we have a valid permit, make sure all the things that's valid, that means having to pay for, there has to be some sort of bond, I would presume, uh, posted, and we have that document on file, that if they wreck the street, they have to put it back, right? So those sorts of things have to be in play.
I don't want them driving trucks and traffic down here in tenth street or on speaker road. And we go to where the property is, I mean, that's just the cost of building and development on a property that is owned. That is mostly indirect, so they, they, it's not fair to our residents for us to be paying to build the streets that they're going to wear down. And so, um, yeah, I want to make sure that that's not, and, and my club is not authorized to do that. And I don't believe, even typing as a future council, the council back then did not authorize that, and so.
I think in the simplest form, we're just looking at, no different than, there's a new house being built and a new driveway, that's similar to what's happened here. So I, we just need to go and find what's our standing, is it expired, as I pointed out, it's been a longstanding conversation, administrative changes, that sort of thing, and, uh, our permitting clerk, who's present today, doesn't have any immediate recall of a pretty significant project. So that means they didn't come in just recently and say, here's a favor. Plus, I think we just need to investigate, I think we have our marching orders, and then we can, we can certainly correspond and that sort of thing. I can work with the council to make sure, again, that we have the legal standing that we.
I don't think this, it seems really very different from that, right? I mean, I think we travel studies, they're, I mean, all sort of things should come to us before that, um, so I, I think, I think that's right. I, I, I should have them look into this today, um, city manager, if I can afford, on that cease and desist, we can, um, figure out what to do.
Make that motion, put the mayor's name on it.
Uh, I want, did you check something about the city in here?
Yeah, that's, it's pretty extensive.
I have read on that, a little bit, one, I worked with that.
Uh, it's, I mean, there's a long, one, one, you listen, I just have to go back to it, but there, there is a number of things the city said that they had to meet some criteria. Eight to twelve long, for sure, from what I read.
My interest is, we, we tabled for refused improvement on erosion on that property on the east side, truly meaning. And I think if we have to have that sent back to the government, that's the most, based in that problem.
Yes.
Has anything happened on that, because that's going to be, you know, I mean, I'm thinking that her property is going to be affected directly again if they start cutting holes in that street, and have to have water, crap, mud, drawn off, isn't it? I think we need to rectify the other situation, just do this, oh man, the one that's been there forever. I think we need to really study this one pretty hard, unfortunately, I may agree with the mayor, if they up there, they can just come there and start cutting the streets out. They took the berm out, which was not supposed to happen, and then to that, that berm was supposed to stay. But they're, they are trampling all over us. And I think, I think Vicki needs to be satisfied before anything gets cut up there and they start leaving any kind of dirt, it's going to affect that property. And I feel, I think we need to protect our residents, and we did put a delay on that issue, but it's been there for a long time.
Can I believe Tom Paul has an update for us?
I ran back to my office and I checked the permit for driveways. I do not show that I ever received a permit in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four for that address.
Maybe the action, the council, for, is the direct staff, uh, to suspend that permit and overthrow altogether. That would require a motion.
So if I'm open, um, this is with this, so we got, we got to see that, that permit. We have a motion from the public, that that's happening, very early.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Adcox. Mullen.
Mayor, if you want to follow up in the comments on that, please, uh, just so there's no confusion.
I can, but I don't hear the permit, the permitting, at least that we do. And then the version, and then, you want to respond about the version?
Yeah, in the, in, we opened the bid package, so to go right back to the bid system, uh, it isn't fair for the people to bid. So we're giving it some time, they know this as well, so it's not as fresh in the record that, you know, you can compare the last person's bid and then land or cut them, that's, so just how fair is it?
And we contact, um, of it.
Have been, she should be aware, I, I messenger, that's usually the best way to be, experience wise, that, that she's, has, has a schedule and doing things, so I've been messaging her, but it's been since we tabled that, and I did mention that we were going to delay it for a little while just to make it fair and best, you know, just a little bit of delay. And then, and, and timing wise, to do some of that work on that property, it is colder. Like, it's, it's easier to access that property, just that difference, so go back to your questions.
Yeah, that's a great kind of, little, back. Um, did you message?
So the, the permit is to the language of the permit, driveway permit, ordinance, regardless of checking, I'm off, like, any person kept or moving curb on three alley, distracted by the, except after making application for the receiving, for the, for the, I didn't, this kind of, um, so, 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 I don't know if that last part is what the city is communicating, to actually provide the specification of the plans filed with the city, how they, second is enforcement. Um, there's two processes, one is prosecution, uh, maybe it's court, I don't issue that. And the ordinance, um, and second is, there's some paper, uh, process, the rule of prosecution, and allow after property abuse, during, um, the property, the property, so, maybe.
Our construction. That's our, that's our. Enforcement. Permit itself, though. Unless the plans and specifications are timed. There are other things. But this is, it's, you know, we're trying to get. Property, they cut. Development. So. In my research. If their plan and specifications is somehow outside of the nature of the permit. Renovation of the permit. He may. May.
Just a crazy thought. Could Mr. Duckworth, who's our judge in our city, could you file an injunction? To stop? You can, you can judge, we pay him to be a judge for us.
Uh, city prosecutor, I'd be willing to file a complaint on that with here. Or and I would. I would put on evidence, um, including remedies and criminal prosecution. Are. Obviously. Signs of jail time. Um. But as part of that. Finding. Finding something else. Um. That could be a order. All of that, injunction.
Cause you don't have to be.
Well, yes, the criminal. Have you filed with them to report? Essentially, I, I, city attorney, I can file civil process on anything that happens. Or, or I can file. Violation code. Prosecution. Given this all the men. For. Always catchy, you need to be careful once you put on the property, you have to file a order. Make sure you're not doing. If the first approach. It is. We have the contact, we know, we're supposed to talk to them. And we have stopped construction on other projects, specifically driveways. Weren't properly inspected or they weren't doing it right or whatever. So the city, we do the inspection. And so we've, we've stopped and suspended permits before. So again, we don't know that. I think they did do anything criminal here, they're, they're following, it looks like the correspondence of the city. You know, they, they, and, uh. Good faith carried out what they believe to be a plan that they submitted, the engineer review, uh, the administration said to proceed. Whether or not they have a valid permit is the first question. The second piece of it is, what authority does administration have to stop this construction? And I think we just go and do it. We're gonna talk to them, we're gonna say, stop, let's get this figured out. Uh, and then again, I, I think if there's some legal ramifications or avenues, they will take their piece of it and we have our piece of it as well. But what we need to do right now, somewhat emergent, stop what they're doing. Let's do that first. And I heard this council tell us to go and do that. So that's, that's what our plan is, is I'm gonna call the man and I'm gonna talk to him and say, hey, we've gotta stop this. Let's regroup, let's figure this out. And if, and if he needs a common petition, the planning commission or the council, then he could do that. Proceeding, shouldn't we choose that, that direction? And, uh, so I, I think that's first and foremost is the plan. And I'm gonna be working there tonight, it'll be tomorrow morning and we'll be in touch with them as soon as this meeting is over, we'll call them back. And just tell them where we stand with it. And then we can figure out a path forward from there. Whether it's we need to take legal action, but the city has some authority to stop some of these things. And we, we have exercised that before, it's not arbitrary, it's just any, right? In the sense that we've done this before. And so we're gonna stop this, they're gonna cut the median, they're gonna do a number of things. It sounds like they have a plan to pull this up, you can, but it's a lot for us to just suddenly have to, to figure out here. So I think our goal is to stop it. So let's do that first, then regroup. And, and then, then I can brief you on what their plan is and kind of what our plan is, what legal standing it'll have and that sort of thing. We can get that done in the next twenty-four hours.
And, and I remember this name, plan that councilman Bishop mentioned earlier, where the only street access to that property was crossing River View. On the west side of Hundred and Ten Street. And so, as, as a governing body, even the previous governing body never approved or gave administration, uh, authority to approve it. Other than that, to cut it or treat it for, for that project to use our streets. Um, you mentioned a motion that would be helpful for stopping permit.
Yeah, I think, but it solidifies, we're just not sure going to do it on staff, but the council wants us, wants us to do that. So should that be your desire? Legal council's here, you may say, you don't have to do that. But it's always good in policy, you're the policy body. We have ordinances that say we can do these things. Uh, but this would say, hey, we're reinforcing staff that takes an authority, cease something for now, temporary suspension. And, and that may be the way to address it. Or we've had this conversation, I hear him being directed to do it, it's on record. I don't know, I'll give it to the council. Yeah, the, the choices you have as far as. How. Certain buildings is taken. First is cease and desist, which. It's more. You know, it's formal, it's more equal, it's legal. Second is. The sort of. A basement. Proceeding. Formal. Those violations. Violation. Here except. Um, that would be formal. All of them, of course, are treated as part. And then, uh, there is. Basis for. Prosecution and civil action at this point. Not the damage, it's expensive, uh, to the city. We're giving it way, whether we file. This report that you have. Injectedly, so to speak. Well, essentially the violation we would have is they didn't secure a proper permit. We don't, I'm not just saying that would be a violation. Someone didn't get a driveway permit, for example. All the stuff that they worked in order, and that would be a violation. City, because what was the approach that is, is we say, stop, you can't do anything else. Go down to city hall, make this right. By all of their works, we have that reviewed, make sure that they're doing it in compliance. And then we would say, proceed or not. So that would be this kind of basic, you know, approach that we would take by residential driveway.
So we should, that we've already for this is business, all right? The current ordinance, at least, all there is the same business, driveway or residential. And we amend that ordinance to say, except for commercial, industrial, business entrances, then that would maybe go before. And that would. The post day increments that I've already been. And that way it would just make sure that's included and then that's part of the permit.
No one posted. Yeah.
So that's going here forward.
Yeah. Why they didn't take me, because you're committing. From this.
Right.
You didn't give. We could somehow find a way to. Or if you. At that, what do you think of that? If you're kind of the concept of. Where you. Buy. Our donations, city. In the home. Um, the council's.
I think we had cities that acted outside of their score. Because this was much, much more than twenty five hundred dollars.
I mean.
So if someone.
Personal matter.
If, if you went to the post office and the post can get a permit to this business, saying we can put a driveway in, it wouldn't be valid.
I'm just saying that from the perspective of the land. There may be additional equitable rights that they have. City, they were informed, we'd have to show that this was exceptional. For that. The example that outside city authority. City. But there's probably, we have to be. Complacency. Say. My legal life. Some. Analysis. Analysis.
You know, this is, B and C Rose, like you said something, the engineer proved that. So I think what we need to do is sit back in there and find out who actually issued the permit. You know, if it was, I mean, if it was B and C Rose, another, I mean.
No, they, they don't act as an agent in that, in that capacity at all. You get your permit for your driveway from the city, but you come down, you fill out the application forms, everything is reviewed and in order, we would then issue it. That's, that's really the basic process. So the engineer is saying, I'm reviewing this plan and I'm, and they're, for example, one of the pieces of that I just. They're gonna cut that median, they're gonna have a turn through that median. And so there's a random median with the lights on it, right? So we would need engineers to go, okay, this is how wide that should be, or if they propose how wide it should be. Does our engineer say that meets the standard? So that's what he's doing, he's almost a, a planned review about what's gonna happen. He doesn't issue a permit, the only thing he can say, or the engineer would say, is, hey, this looks to be all in order after they posed these questions. That seemed to be the correspondence, is that we had questions about their plan and they answered and addressed those. When we correspond, again, that they said, okay, then, then this looks like they took the. Some delay, that was, what did I say, twenty twenty-one? We have correspondence in twenty-two and in twenty-three. Okay, so and then, and now they're building buildings on there and now they're doing curb cuts. What we don't have is maybe a, a valid two day permit, but we do not know whether they paid it back then. And when they started, they got this somewhat, uh, you know, written approval for it. I, I really think we go back, circle back to my suggestion is, let me make the phone call, let me talk to them, let's. And then, if I, I think I have the authority to say, cease and desist for now. And we're going back to the drawing board. And I think we have some authority as a policy body to take something up formally, that would either say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna approve this particular piece. This has been going on for some time, and I don't know if that, the construction folks are acting in good faith. I think they believe that they had this all together and they just took a little bit of time. So I think there's just things that we have to research. So I, I think step one is we talk to them first. And then if for some reason they decide that I'll override us in any way, then we have these abatements, we have this legal avenue, which we will more than likely have to take if that happens. But I think there should be some reason, they mustn't want to work with us. Clearly, they've worked with us for a number of years through this thing, so, uh, they may want to do a ride on surgery. So let, let me talk to them first, I think that's good marching orders. And then we'll understand in the next few days where our legal standing is. And we can research all of this and we can have a better plan to present to you. So if we needed ordinance change, or if we had some sort of procedure or internal change, then we can propose that to you, you can set that as a policy body.
So you may need to make a motion to. To. I don't know if you mentioned before.
I don't think so, and I, I'm reversing course a little bit, potentially they don't have a permit, so what are you doing, right? You're, you're, we're not, we're not recalling the permit or right, uh, we're not gonna give anything if they don't have one, because that would be.
When I show them what's happening, they're gonna say, here's our permit, they cut you the street.
Right. Yeah, no, that's, I'm not gonna issue, reissue a permit until this is. Essentially, go ahead. And the only, we. That's why potentially getting staff in forty now to start the pavement. Please provides a formal process to pay. Or able to. Tell this is resolved. But I, I can't at this point say that I can do a violation of the permit.
We need a motion to start the abatement process if we find a violation of it.
And that will be the branch of staff. If I have additional. Is that fifteen five? And. It is. Fifteen five one five. The main. Eighteen. Six. This is. Uh, new staff.
Could you lay that in the statement?
Certain reason. City staff being authorized. There are. Possibly. Violations. City, city. Oh. What do you say?
So they have a motion for possible admission of the second, and also the third, and the fourth, please hold on.
Bishop.
Yes.
Malat.
Yes.
Schreiber.
Yes.
Adcox.
Yes.
Mullen.
Just for the record. I had a clearly, very specific conversations with a former community member about the city's. I don't know, I would never let, uh. I would never allow them perks and enter our streets. That's what he told me about letting them cross over and returning on. And if you know something differently, that's unfortunate, but that was never communicated to myself. Um, the chair of the planning commission is with us right now, that was never communicated to either of us. That would have, this is really been communicated. And so that was acting outside of his authority, that was a verb. Maybe that is. City manager report, do you have any?
Nothing further, Mary.
Councilman Mullen, anything for us to keep in?
I would just like to support the budget.
Councilman Bishop.
I would guess I would like to have Mr. Brody's, uh, ordinances that will go in.
I'm right here.
Yeah. That's, I can't say I'm having.
I haven't torn a voice to you on this. I don't have to.
It's nice though.
Mary, would you like an update on the, I'm doing the research, we just wanna make sure that we're not making one adjustment for one circumstance that we're gonna capture. So that, I think what we need, at least, is consider, let's go. There's not a consideration for any other circumstance. So that's what we're gonna build around, so that council can make their decision. That's it, that's what I have. Probably next week.
All right. Addition. I got one credit hour. Possible. Ready. This is.
Hour. Oh, I feel. Thank you. Well, if you can email the Kansas website, it says the aid law.
Yeah. Hey, we're working on it.
Yes.
Councilman Malat.
I do have a couple of comments. I know those, I'm sure on the budget is not popular for some people, but my explanation on that. Is we have one with the mill for the last eight groups now, I'm proud of that, I'm happy that we've done that. We did definitely need to exceed revenue in this law. Financial situation, it is going to get straightened out, but it's gonna take a little bit longer while we continue to lower the bill. I'm concerned with the balance that we have. And, and general fact, that's what concerns me. And I think the average, most of the citizens don't realize that part of it. There's not a, there's a super big bankroll that we can go get. We have some kind of cavity. If we have some kind of cabinet, I think experience. That's one of the reasons for my no vote on that. I pay back to this, just like you all, and mine went up like thirty-six percent. That's considerable, considering what my house cost in nineteen seventy-six and what it valued at now. That's my explanation on that. I am in favor of lowering taxes, but we're suffering ourselves because it will wind up counting your taxes. Please understand that. I've had very good compliments on the condition of the city park. People that walk down there quite a bit are really complimentary. The other thing on the, on the budget, the other thing is we took salary money out of the budget that would have funded three firefighters and one police officer. To me, that's a problem. I think that we needed to keep that money, and I might be the only one that thinks that up there. But if you can add some salaries. That's my simple action. I hope you don't hate.
Councilman Harris.
Hi, um, wanna bring up the old topic I brought up before. Our piece on. You said.
Digital sign?
Correct.
Yes, what's needed?
I, um, I wanna say there was many who marked for that. Two?
Uh, chairs money?
Yes. Well, we have the ones I, but for another one, and. I, I know, I know there's been discussion, there's been research where, where it can and should be placed. Um. But I think the. Intersection at fourth and K thirty-two. The church was, I think, I think the. Best place possible, where we had a little bit of room. I, I know you're busy.
I, I have, I've reached out to them again, partly this because a number of announcements. That we're just not reaching our folks.
Um, no.
And nothing else. You know, uh, having, having that opportunity to kind of broadcast it out, there's a drive-by and everything else. That's just one more thing. Uh, we also talked about, like that Mayor made a good point at some point, uh, we. When we get these facilities, we need one of those right in front of the area to kind of announce things as well. So tactically putting it somewhere now, if we're gonna invest in them, that's, that's the hardest thing right now. Because where can we go? Right now, the. Assessment tells me that we have to go toward the church side of fourth and K thirty-two, there's a, there's a wide swath of, of Edwardsville owned driveway. But we could do that, it would just have to be the right sign, right position. So I'm working with a digital sign company that also did our springs, the same one I've adopted. And, uh, they, they, they actually pointed that side out, so we can, we originally had a conversation. But we need to have the money to invest. Uh, we don't have to have just the marble funds, we may be able to combine two or three different funds together. But it's gonna be a little bit of investment, so we just have to. Fourth and K thirty-two, I'm a little angry, at, on the east northeast corner is prime. But, uh, a lot of that is probably only one element, that driveway is really jagged, if you're there to reach up. I have spoken with them about, is there, could we buy more driveway, that sort of thing, and they offered the property the same. I won't tell you what the number was. But that, I am researching, I appreciate you bringing it up, and, you know, I certainly, I think it's much needed, but I think it's time to come. Further that, I've asked for some temporary digital signage from the same company, if we can rent it. Just putting in a surplus, cause it's bigger, it has better letters, a little more colors, that sort of thing, something in the small one that we have, it's, that's not it. You don't really get the feel for it, that works, so that's something I did ask as well.
There's just so many, there's so many things to say.
Yes.
I, I know, and I know. The city's got great with the, the flags and that, and that type of. You're doing, they do a good job, but I just. I think some kind of sign right there would be. I think it's. Um, as far as the. Construction going on up there. Austin property. Speaker Road. Is that pretty much a residential street?
Oh, it is, yes. Uh, you know, we.
Have they had trucks going up and down there?
You know, maybe he worked there for several weeks this summer. They, they cut into our, our fresh road, uh, without really telling us, which is a good problem, but. Uh, there, there has been some equipment going out there, I've seen it specifically.
From the construction?
Yeah, they, they have construction interests on the other side, though that they should be. I've seen MACOs and stuff, but some, I don't know if it's all, you knew there for a while and that sort of thing. But, uh, they shouldn't be using that as an construction interest, it's never approved. Probably good.
But no, it would be one of those.
We, we can certainly do something.
So much that road.
Should be.
Now, there must be some question on that.
No, no, that's true. It shouldn't be using that as an obstruction at all, it's actually off the road beside.
Right. Is River View, some of River View being part of the threat, or am I wrong?
Yes, it's all there.
All there.
Yes.
So whatever they do with that.
Yeah, and that, that, of course, that would have been reconstructed, though, whole.
Right.
Commercial vehicles, so.
So could you see it back?
Yes.
And. When is the next one?
November, I, I don't know the dates specifically, but it's a Saturday. We're gonna do the same thing again with the public side, let's, let's sign it out.
As far as the news, and I really not. Necessarily affect the children. Is the school, can you get about maybe another ten announcements to. It's apparent, you know, to spread? Other questions like that, are they, are they?
Yeah, and Mike Martin certainly know, uh, we have new principles, you might know, and that sort of thing, so things may be a little different. And Mike Martin's probably been the one that gave me with them for various reasons, part of it, right? Without vacation for the next couple of weeks, but certainly, they used to give, uh, a pamphlet out and that sort of thing, we used to be a part of that a little bit, so let me see, I'll, I'll research it.
I think a lot of their communication will have gone, I think not, but if you check on that, that way, I mean, that's at least another communication. Especially in school construction, summertime, you're all around. Just another avenue to give them.
Councilman Adcox?
I look up all this, I wrote it down, so I will. After confirming with Mayor Burner today, I'm very pleased to announce the removal of pilot from VCU dolls in the near future. This is something I've advocated for the county level for years with the support of this governing body. While speaking of making adjustments with the U, I feel time is at the expense of enforcing our current ordinance that requires them to operate under a franchise agreement within our city. As of right now, they do what they want and when they want, with no permission or communication with our city. To moving our attorney production agreement to bring them into compliance as quickly as possible. I'm thankful the Mayor Burner, David Johnston, and Tony Fishers were finally removing VCU, or sorry, finally removing pilots. Looking forward to working with you to ensure that you're working towards a future relationship. Uh, also wanted to remind, um, the community that the state is the deadline for registration for this month's mobile entry. So if you or anyone, you know, is in need, um, straight opportunity to become a grocery, um, join the community, so, but registration is required. So please sign up, ties up from red eleven, um, you can find that on the city west side as long as this is ready. Um, I have the chicken ordinance in there to see the update, which I think we covered that. Um, I believe that families have communicated with that, that's just on hold, so hold on to and take care of those chickens. Um, don't worry about that for now, when we get this figured out, we're, um, working on a new solution. And then, um. Last, I did also want to mention for our community members, um, that we'll have information regarding the sales tax proposals to fund the new and improved buildings at Autumn Pass. So make sure you watch for, um, staff there, uh, to get information about those. And we're gonna have community forums, or it's one halls, whatever you wanna call it, for residents to come and be able to ask questions and get information about that project as well. So, um, keep an eye out for safer dates on those coming up, you wanna make sure to answer any questions that you might have and to get back their information about residents. If y'all are coming tonight, I'll give you.
Don't forget to sign the form.